Join me in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to our May 5 meeting. Please note the council is in full attendance. Want to welcome everyone here. Of course, we'll have items from council first, and then we'll have citizens communication if anyone would like to to address us. I have a couple of items, but council, you guys want to go first? Anybody?
I have one short one. I was going to thank Mr. Short for taking care of that intersection at Crestwood today. And also, I was going to ask if he had some type of plan to address all the residential potholes that have sprung up or down because of the rains that we've had. And I'm sure he does, but...
They're rapidly working on them as quickly as possible.
I realize that, but...
And again, if residents would either call them in or go out to the website and put it in, that will help us greatly, too.
Right, and process online, is you just create a user ID?
You can do it anonymous, you don't even have to do that, so makes it real easy. You just go out and put the address in and the issue or approximate location. Very helpful if the residents will help us with that, so...
Thank you.
And take a picture, encourage people, because I've been, I actually do the anonymous one, too, because I don't feel like logging in. But I often take a picture, so...
My question was, on the paper, I noticed that there's a website, a new website that we have for the police department, and I just had a couple of questions I wanted to ask about it.
Sure.
One of them is, I know that we have a system, an encrypted system for the radios, and is this going to be a real, like, real-time website that what's happening is going to be posted?
I can, out of my peripheral vision, I see the chief getting that, but it's not real-time, there is a delay in that information, but...
Evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Yes, there is a, that particular feature that you're referring to is the dispatch calls that you're looking at. And there is, it is a running log of ongoing calls that are coming in through the communications center. But there is a delay attached to it, so they're not, the delay's about 10 minutes off right now. So, we're trying, we're testing that, that feature out to see if, if 10 minutes is the right amount of time in terms of a delay after the officers get on scene, that kind of thing.
Okay. I was just wondering if, because, you know, we paid for that encryption, and I just wondered if it was going to enhance or, you know, have any problems with it later on?
We don't think so. The radio traffic versus the dispatch notes?
No, I don't anticipate that. I think it's just, at least from my perspective, it was just another way to engage the community and give them some information as to real-time, as close to real-time as possible as to what's going on within the city.
So, people will be able to log in and tell you, hey, this is going on, or this happened, and if you need, this is what we saw, or whatever?
There's a feature that will allow you to do that, send us information, and we'll be unveiling some additional software out there, some technology that will further enhance that capability. So, we have a couple more lined up, ready to come out in the coming months.
There's numerous tabs out there on that website that you can open up and do different things on. But do you want to mention that tip 411-2 is another way of...
We launched tip 411, and that's a web-based application that allows you to send anonymous information via text to us or online. And it gives you a number, and you're allowed, and you can do it, like I said, anonymously, give us the information. But what we're trying to do now is, is we're going to launch our next phase of that, and that's an alerting system where you can opt-in with your cellphone, and you can pick from a series of type of incidents that you want to be notified about. Right now, we're loading in all the different neighborhoods within the city. And so, if you want to know what's going on in that particular neighborhood, you would just opt-in and say, let me know everything that happens in Woodway, and anything that happens in there, we'll start auto, you know, sending you information. So, that's coming, that's part of the tip 411, but it's more of an alerting system. Right now, what we do have onboard, online right now, is that you can send anonymous tips on crimes that are occurring. And we're seeing some, some activity with that. And then, we also have Crime Stoppers. So, with, between the Crime Stoppers and tip 411, and then now, the P to C, you know, police to citizen, we're going to expect to see additional information coming our way.
Good, good.
That would be a great, uh, city manager report when y'all are ready up here. And then, you know, I attended three out of your four zone meetings, and y'all did good. I assume you're going to want to demo all these tools your next round of zone meetings.
Absolutely.
I think it's great.
Yes.
Which is May 28? What's your next zone meeting?
That's the next one.
Already?
May 28. It's 28th, 29th?
I think it's a week before that, I don't have it in front of me.
Yes, let's see. I think it's the 28th.
That would be the last one, and we'll start over again.
Oh, we have five.
We have five zones.
I was thinking four, and I thought that was, okay, so one more.
The 500 zones, it's Strowman, Chief, Strowman.
Yeah.
And then they start over, I think, in September.
And they'll go back to, starting 100. And then we'll unveil the P to C, and we'll talk about some different ways in which the public can continue to, to let us know what's going on. And two-way communication.
Good. Well, maybe, I like what Mrs. Lee said, her thoughts about it and the city manager report. So, keep that kind of on the burner when y'all are ready.
That'd be great.
Show it to us in here, okay?
Absolutely.
I really, I guess I could just go look at the website myself.
It's, it's easy to, just go to the PD website, and it's on there, on the front page.
Click on the link, and it'll take you right to it.
It does. It's, if I can maneuver it, you can maneuver it.
Did you find out what day that was?
I think it's on the 28th.
I don't have it on my calendar.
It's that last Thursday. And I thought it's not popping up on my calendar. I think it's the 28th at 6:00. We'll, we'll verify that.
I'll send that information to you.
Yeah, but it is at Strowman, and it's 500 zones.
Yeah, I know it's my zone.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it.
Can we pull D3, just for, point of clarification?
D3?
Yeah.
The fireworks?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, council? If not, I did want to ask about a little update on the water. I know there's been some complaints on the quality of it and smell, maybe, tell us what you've done so far, and how it's coming?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. As y'all are all aware, we did start receiving some taste and odor complaints on our water roughly Wednesday of last week. Since that time, at that time, we thought it may be because of the end of our chlorine burn, so we were kind of waiting for that to play out. But that's apparently not what the, what it was. So, on Friday, we began feeding powder-activated carbon or PAC to help kind of absorb those tastes and odors, chemically burn them off. And also, we increased our, our amount of flushing that we're doing. That seems to have helped us out quite a bit. I think Thursday, we had, you know, 23 complaints. Friday, we had a similar number. Saturday, it dropped down to, I think it was one complaint, nothing on Sunday. And then, this week, I've had about three each day. So, I think we're getting, we're getting there. I think, I think we're almost there, so...
What's a chlorine burn?
Annually, we do a routine maintenance. It's a recommended best management practice from TCEQ, and we change our disinfection process from chloramines to a stronger disinfection, chlorine. And it's basically designed to help keep any buildup off the inside of the pipes. It's a, it's a, it's a higher dosage of chlorine. So, some of those complaints that we're getting earlier on were that the water had a very high chlorine taste or smell to it. And so, we, we thought it was because we were at the end of our chlorine burn, and it wasn't being absorbed, that chlorine wasn't being absorbed anymore. So, you know, we were just a couple of days from that being, that ending, you know, that, that month period ended on April 30th at midnight. So, we, we thought that's, might be what it was, but it, you know, it can, it persisted, you know, that, that we started getting other complaints beside a chlorine smell. We started having some musty or dirty tasting water smell, so, which is typically not associated with the chlorine burn. So, we, that's when we decided we better start feeding powder-activated carbon and do a little bit more flushing.
Water's safe?
The water is absolutely safe. We, you know, we have continued our sampling regiment. We sample more times than the state requires us to. All of those samples have come back good, the ones in the plant and the ones that are done out in the field. The water is, exceeds state and federal regulations, so we're water-safe to drink.
How often are you testing the water normally, even outside of this incident routinely?
Normally, we run, we're required to do test samples once a day on about 15 to, I think it's 15 to 18 different parameters. And we actually test those parameters four times a day at the plant. And then, we, in addition, we sample outside the plant at various locations once a month, and all of those have turned out good so far.
Just reassuring the public that the water's safe regardless of the odor.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all still give tours at the plant, water plant?
Sure.
Because I remember the room where you do the testing, they showed everybody that.
The lab, yes, absolutely, we give tours.
Very good, okay. So, I'd hope in the, it sounds like next few days it should be normal.
We're, we're hoping, yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, items from council? Okay, if not, we'll, we'll open citizens communication if anyone here would like to come up and speak about anything at all. And seeing none, we'll close citizens communication and move into our ordinances.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code relating to fees, increasing various fees for services administered by the city county health department, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to accept item C1.
Second.
Thank you, motion and second, is there discussion? We talked about it last time, I know. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. C2?
Item C2 is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2014-2015 City of Victoria General Fund's street department budget by $250,000 and transferring $200,000 within the general fund's street department budget for the change in scope to the 2015 Seal Coat Project, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
This one has a public hearing with it?
Yes, it does.
Let's go ahead and open that now. So, if anyone would like to come forward and speak about C2 specifically, now would be the time. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Will we adopt?
Second.
Second, any discussion on council?
All of this is coming from general fund money, right? Gotcha. Street department.
Very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. I guess one and two, and then we'll do three separately.
Sounds good. There are two items remaining on the consent agenda. They are, first, the approval of amendments of the regular meeting of April 21st, 2015, the special meeting on April 23rd, 2015, and the special joint meeting on April 23rd, 2015. And second, a resolution approving the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the Victoria Police Department in an amount not to exceed $36,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion, will you accept items D1 and D2?
Second.
Thank you, a motion and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. D3?
Item D3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of the agreement with Zambelli Fireworks to provide an exhibition and display of fireworks for the city's Fourth of July Celebration Fireworks Show in the amount of $30,000 and declaring an effective date.
Mayor, how many will you adopt, D3?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Alvarez.
Yes, just wanted to emphasize, will this be the second year back at the community center, or the third year?
Well, I think it's the second year.
Back, okay. Just wanted to make that point, that it's going to be back at the community center, because I kept looking, is it at the mall or at the community center?
It's at the community center.
Will be at the community center, okay. Excellent.
Well, I'm glad you pulled it. I was going to mention this under items from council, but I really want to thank Hartman Distributing. Very generous of them to contribute that $15,000 again. And they also, they're also sponsor Boot Fest, as well as others. There are many others that sponsor Boot Fest, but, and then the street dances, too. So, their contribution to the community is appreciated by me for sure, so... Any further comments on D3? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Two resolutions.
Item E1 is a resolution accepting settlement from Elko Administrative Services on behalf of Enterprise Rental Cars for a claim on behalf of the city in the amount of $21,691.50, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to finalize the settlement and declaring an effective date.
Move that we adopt, E1?
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion on E1? Okay.
Is it 10% normal? Because did we do 10% last time, too?
I think it was 10% the, the last time this came up. Normal, I, I don't know that I would characterize it as normal. This is what they're requesting, so...
Well, I didn't see on here that it was staff recommendation. Is that because they were at 10% last time, and 10% would be okay here?
Right.
Okay. That's what I figured, but I just thought I'd ask. Okay.
More questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Item E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the city to pay the additional material costs to install upgraded LED lighting on the overpass at the intersection of Loop 463 and Airline Road in the amount of $17,981.25 and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E2.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Staff's recommending this one? So...
Is that like half on one side and half on the other? So, how far on, on the loop is it going to go?
It's an airline road.
The, uh...
The overpass?
The, uh, it's going to be that new overpass section that's being built right now over Airline.
Over Airline?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a lot of lights.
Yes, yes, ma'am. It is.
So, when is Tech Start going to start doing LED?
Well, you know, that was a, that was a good question. You know, we approached them about this, trying to, to get this changed, and they were gracious enough to, to work with us and get it done. But I don't, I don't know when it's going to be in their scope to just do this from now on.
It's a good question for us to ask the new district engineer when we meet him.
It is. It's, it's obviously, I mean, you're, you made a case, I think, pretty good in your CM1. It just seems like a smart move, so I would think they need to get on ball and start doing it, too. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. City manager reports.
Jared's going to talk about priority for CDBG.
Good evening, Mayor and council. In your packet was a CM1 with a table in it that listed some priority rankings for the new consolidated plan that we're working on. As y'all are aware of that, we were here, gosh, I guess a couple of months ago, kind of asking for some direction. So, we've since taken your direction, which was kind of a little bit of, let's stay the course, and went out to the community, visited with a number of our nonprofit partners and whatnot, and to do our due diligence in getting citizen input on the plan. So, this is the results of that, and it's, again, kind of staying the course from what we've been doing. So, within this table, it's broken into affordable housing, community development, public services, and public facilities. If it has a higher priority ranking, that means we intend to fund it with CDBG funds sometime within the five-year scope of the, of the plan. There is one item under affordable housing that talks about the increasing affordable rental housing that has a low priority. That's the only one on there that has that low, that has a ranking of low. And it's simply to recognize that there is a need for that. We don't intend to fund it, but should a developer, housing authority, or someone come with an application, we have it in our plan, because it's one of the checkbox's for those tax credit projects or any other grant funding. They have to be able to show that it's consistent with the city's consolidated plan and be able to show that there's a need. So, that's why we have it in here. But it is low, because we do not intend to spend CDBG money to, for that specific priority. So, tonight, I just really wanted to make sure that we were, we have consent, consent, some consensus from you as we continue to move forward in developing the plan. The reason we're bringing the priorities to you tonight is, it's time for us, for staff, to go ahead and, and release the applications for our public service agencies to apply for funding. And we anticipate releasing those applications later this week. And have, actually, I think Thursday, Darla has a meeting scheduled with the nonprofits and wants to be able to go, go over what our funding priorities are, so that they know what categories are going to be eligible for them to, to apply for assistance under. So, I don't know if y'all have any specific questions, but again, it's broken into four categories. You can see, under affordable housing, we would continue to try to complete Swan Crossing. That's the Swan Crossing initiatives. Homeowners, home ownership assistance is our mortgage assistance, our down payment program. We would continue that. We would also continue our partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Something that's a little different in here, that was a result of our community input, was under housing rehabilitation, a community risk program. And this is something where agencies could apply to assist eligible residents with handicap ramps or smoke detector installation. Those are a couple of the instances that were specifically mentioned. So, that's something that's a little different in this year's plan. As far as the rest of the community development, we would continue cut enforcement, demolition, neighborhood cleanups, park improvements, installing transit shelters and sidewalks in eligible areas as funding's available. Moving on to public services, we would continue our subsistence support services. That's our, like, mills-on-wheels, utility payment assistance programs, children and youth services, employment job training services. And then, a new one this year, or for the next five years, would be mental health and wellness services. Kind of goes hand-in-hand with our almost-complete Gulf Ben Center. Homeless and at-risk homeless prevention services and senior and disabled services. And then, on public facilities, again, homeless shelters, the need to increase our capacity in those, youth centers, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, those are, those type of facilities. And any facility that would, that would target a special needs population. So, and that's left very generic. But that, that category was in there five years ago, and that's how we were able to justify the Gulf Ben housing project that's under construction. So, that's kind of our priorities. They're sort of repeated again down there on the second page of your CM1. But I'll be happy to answer any questions, love to hear your concerns, comments. If there are any...
Jared, on your public service, that's limited to 15%? You said of the total grant?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know the other percentages, kind of, sort of?
There aren't any other, there aren't any other caps, other than in the administration line item. Administration's limited to 20%. Public services is limited to 15% of the funding.
Okay. So, then you would have to take the 15% divided into all of these categories if they applied from the different agencies?
Right, right. As a reminder, this, the funding we'll be receiving in October went down this year. Around 508,000. This current year, we're at 561. So, unfortunately, that, our amount, that 15% goes down just a little bit more. Comes out to around $76,000 for those. We'll be able to fudge that a little bit. There's some, not to get too deep into the weeds of all of it, but we have, we've had program income we received from the sale of some of the Swan Crossing lots. We're able to count part of that, to be able to increase that. So, as we get a little further along, we'll be back in July to council, be able to show you kind of a draft budget and let you see kind of how that's going to, how we think that's going to be able to break down. And assuming council's probably willing to allocate the maximum to those public services, that's, that's what we've been doing over the last few years. So, we would stay the course with that. This may be one of those years where we receive more applications than we're able to fund. We're, we're kind of expecting that. So, we may have some hard decisions to make come July and August.
Can anyone on staff remember when it's ever gone up? I don't think it's gone up.
It's, it's been on a downward trend for years. Last year, it did go up. I think the previous, 2013, the money was maybe 540, and we went up to 561. Now, it's all the way down to 508. So, it's fluctuated.
It was interesting when you made that quick question, Mayor, because John, I was, you're talking about the old days, when it was about, about $2 million.
I remember about 1.5.
1.5 is all I remember.
No, it was, it was higher than that, especially on the outside auditor, and it was much higher than that, so... It was, it's amazing how within this...
I remember reconciling a whole lot more than that.
Yeah, you were working, yeah.
Yeah.
Keep increasing, the number of cities eligible for it keep increasing, and the, so the, more people take, more cities taking a piece of the pie, and the pie isn't growing very much, so...
I had a couple of two questions.
Yes, sir.
You were saying, I think, the last time, that geographically, more area might be eligible because of the census data?
Yes, sir. We have, we've finally updated the census information related to income, so it's, it's kind of shifted around. I didn't bring a map with me, but we can provide it to you. In fact, I may even have that on the website. But there are some new census block groups that start creeping further north. The most interesting one is the census block group that includes Castle Hills West, kind of Stockbauer, Salem, Guy Grant, Navarro, that, some kind of triangle there, actually goes all the way down, I think, to Salem where Navarro hits. But if you think about it, there's a number of apartment complexes and, and whatnot in there, and somehow, it's brought it down where it's eligible.
The other thing was that some organizations have now received funding for multiple years. There's no caps, they can keep coming back every year, you know?
They can, and that may be something that, that y'all will need to consider. Some, you know, new agencies requesting funds for maybe a, a new service versus continuing to fund the services you've been funding. But those, those services have been funding, you know, like, utility assistance or whatnot. You're assisting new clients every time, but you can...
Some of the capital projects that, that took up a chunk of, of the resources...
Yes, sir. So, you, I don't know what...
Hopefully, we can redistribute that to other agencies that might...
Right, right. And I don't, I really don't have a good expectation of what may come in from that, from...
For capital projects?
For capital projects or public facilities. We don't have that cap on those, but other than, we only have 508,000, so...
They could eat up quite a bit of it.
Yes, sir, sure could.
Two or three projects, I've noticed. Thank you.
I think you've done a good job the last few years. There's been some measurable progress, especially those capital projects mentioned.
Yeah, we've, we've, despite the funding going down, we've, we've, the community overall has accomplished really some phenomenal work for a city our size to have, you know, a shelter like Midcoast and the Gulf Ben facility, which is, I think, we're one of three or four in the entire state. So, we've really accomplished some, some good things.
And those, long after we stopped funding them, of course, it was capital, they'll continue to serve our constituents, which that's what I like about it, so...
All right. We'll stay the course, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have a brief update on the hot funding process for granting hotel occupancy tax money to applications from outside entities. What I'm proposing tonight is to change the calendar, the schedule, and move everything up by two weeks. Instead of putting the applications out on June 1st, we would put them out on May 15th instead. The benefit of that would be to conclude the process with council approving committee recommendation prior to the budget coming to council, so that your approval could then be rolled into the initial budget and wouldn't have to be amended as part of the budget process. And so, I've given to each of you a schedule of kind of how the process lays out over the course of the summer. And if council gives consensus to move that direction, then starting tomorrow, we will notify each prior applicant that we're making a change to the schedule. We don't want anybody to get caught in the lurch and miss out on the opportunity to apply. We have email addresses for, for each of the applications that was a part of the application process, so we can shoot an email out pretty quickly. We'll also do newspaper advertisements. I'll give a copy of this calendar to Melissa. Hopefully, she can run an article about it as well, to make sure that everybody's aware of it. But if council's willing to make this adjustment to the schedule, we'll follow that schedule.
Sense?
I think it would be good, and it's during the budget discussions, it becomes such a distraction. And not that it's not important, but it's a small part of our overall budget. One of the things, at this point, since you have it on here, I have been working a little with Thomas. I have noticed when we get a recommendation from the committee, it's, here's what we think you should do. There's not much supporting, why did you think? And I don't know, maybe Mr. Alvarez brought this up, too, but... So, we'll be working on a simple sheet that contains some info information, well, why did you decide to give this entity money and this one not? And I didn't want to make it a lot of work, not paragraphs of information on every application, just something very simple. And also showing that basic criteria, how many hotel rooms did they actually verify they filled? So, we'll have, we have a draft, and that'll be available to us. I think it should help the process. Of course, it might make even more discussion, I don't know. But you know how that goes. So, anyway, I look forward to the process starting and going well. So, is there anything else? That's it? That concludes our agenda. We do have executive session upstairs?
Yes, upstairs.
Okay, so we are adjourned.
The city council will adjourn now for two executive, for an executive session tonight on May 5th, 2015, at 5:30 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code, Section 14...